I should sit here or some.
That's right.
Dwayne and Bonnie Murray, 124 Wellers Bridge Road for construction of a three-bedroom dwelling. So we did do a legal notice?
We did do the legal notice.
Did we notify Butters?
We did. We notified all of Butters have been notified.
Okay. So a public hearing is just for anybody who wants to comment on this application, but only on this application and only on wetland issues. We don't deal with traffic, kids in school, things like that. So when you want to speak, just raise your hand, it'll call you, state your name and where you live. But first, we'll start with a presentation by the engineer, Brian Neff.
Thank you, Russ.
Yeah.
Do we need a roll call?
Oh, Paula, board the order, start with Rob.
Rob Oregon.
Sue Fitch.
John Smolaga.
Chris, Chris Haggerty.
Sierra, you out there?
Yeah, Gorg Leon.
Kathy Roz.
Okay, we have a full quorum and all the regular members are here, so I don't need to see an alternate. Just, we're not gonna vote, well, we might vote tonight, I don't know. But just so you know, Chris, alternates could ask questions, be a part of the whole thing until a motion is made. That's when the alternates can't speak.
No discussion after that.
I have no idea why, why the lawyers figured that one out. That's what it is. Also, this is a special meeting, right, Julie, after?
It is a special meeting.
And the reason for that is if this ends early, we could go right into the meeting. For where a regular meeting, we'd have to sit around and wait for seven o'clock. That's the only reason. Okay, Brian?
This is what Brian is showing right now.
And I guess for the record, I'm Brian Neff, licensed engineer. And since our last meeting, this is a, what's up on the screen right now is the plan I put together as a soil erosion set of a control plan, which gives so details about the project itself. A narrative description gives instructions. It's showing specifications for erosion controls during construction, along with a couple of cross-sections. I've got a cross-section of the roof infiltration system, which from the last meeting, I switched from going from a dry well to the Caltech 330 XL units, which are, provide a lot more surface area for drainage. The, the original plan was for a dry well, concrete dry well. But actually, after this last big rainstorm we had, I thought it'd be wise to, to make this a higher capacity system and exceed the 100-year requirements for rainfall, which is 8.75 inches. I think at my house, it was probably nine or 10 inches, it seems like.
That's in 24 hours, right?
Yes.
And that storm we had was like in five hours, so that was a one in 1,000.
Yeah, it was a very high-intensity storm. So I went back and redesigned the drain system to provide more capacity. We're still holding 100-foot setback with no disturbance within that 100-foot to the river. So that line has remained the same from the previous plan. I talked with Mark Murray about the addition of some retaining walls, which will help in terms of grading. The idea is to try to keep the disturbance area as small as possible. And retaining walls definitely help in terms of cutting the grade slopes down. You can see some, some retaining walls actually on both sides of the house. That actually allows it to be terraced out to provide a little less disturbance, excuse me, for grading purposes. I've also included a stone wall along the bottom patio area. That's kind of a walkout area of this two-level house. I think in terms of design of the house, oftentimes people want a one-level house these days, which I'd probably go with myself because I'm tired of walking up and downstairs. But in this case, it's a two-level house, which actually makes it more compact in terms of a footprint on the property. It includes a two-car attached garage at the upper level, and the lower basement walkout level would come out to the patio below. I've got a stone wall that wraps around that patio. So any excess water coming off the house itself, beyond just the roof drainage system would be caught in that confined area behind the patio. So we tried to make, make the disturbed area as small as possible. There's an existing well on the site that's going to be used for water, so it doesn't have to be a new well drilled for this. And there's already power to the barn, which can be upgraded and extended from the barn over to the new house site. As far as the access goes, there's a wood, kind of a wood road that goes to the back of the property, which is on the, the upper part of the plan. I've included an infiltration trench on the uphill side of that driveway. It's, there's a lot of sand and gravel in the area, which is good for drainage. But that's going to, we're going to pitch the driveway towards that, towards that drain to pick up any water coming off the driveway itself and try to get that underground. Fortunately, the tests we did on the site in terms of soils were very deep sanded gravel soils, which are good for drainage. On a lot of sites, we can't do something like that because you might have hardpan down a couple of feet. But in this case, the soils on the site are, are, are very good for drainage. In terms of the, the location of the house, looking at the entire site, it's, it's kind of a funny-looking overall property. I don't know if Julie can show the, the overall property map. It's a, it's a kind of a funny-looking site. It starts out being fairly wide by Wellers Bridge Road, and it kind of narrows out and then expands out again, going down towards a river. And then goes to like a point on the end of the property. So in terms of the zoning setbacks, it's kind of limited in terms of where you could actually build a house on the site. So the area where it bulges out, which is near the Chappag River, provides the most area to be able to do construction and meet zoning regulations and so forth that go along with that. The idea of the Murray's is they've, they've got a house that's right near Wellers Bridge Road, which dates back to the 1800s originally. Was built inside the zoning setback and it's very close to the roadway, which, you know, if you, if you live there, if you drive up and down Wellers Bridge Road, you know it's pretty heavily trafficked zone. And pretty noisy for road, you know, road noise going up and down the hill. So they would like to have the house further back where it's proposed right now. Then they could use the, the house, the old house in the front as an accessory dwelling unit. Possibly rent that out or have relatives live there. So in terms of the overall use of the property, I think there's, there's some good sense in, in the way this is laid out. The house location being further back from the road would be a lot quieter than the one that's right on the road. In terms of the, the prior approvals, we've gotten approval from the Health Department for the septic. The Director of Health was out there and we did the test and she signed off on the permit. There's no fill required for the septic system. It's in the ground system because of the sandy gravel soils. So actually, every, everything we could do to try to minimize the footprint and stay away from the river as much as possible was, was done on this. There's going to be no tree cutting and no disturbance between the end of the, limited disturbance was 100-foot off the river, down to the river itself. There's, there's a pretty good standard of trees in the way. And the owners are not going to touch those trees in terms of any cutting or clearing down to the river itself. So that's my explanation of the, of the project. If anybody has questions, I certainly would be able to answer those.
Right, Brian, what's the footprint again on the house, square footage?
See, four footage is 3,123 square feet.
Is that the disturbance? Is that the footprint of it?
That's the footprint. That's the living area of the house. And there is a two-car garage attached to that. Three, 3,000, a little over 3,000.
But that's the living area. What's, what's the footprint?
Yeah, just the footprint.
Footprint is 3307.
That includes the garage?
Yeah, it's a two-car garage.
And from the limited disturbance, how, what's the elevation difference between that and the Chappag River?
It's approximately 20 feet between the river edge, the river bank, because it's up, it's got a higher bank on this side versus the other side. So it's about, about a 20-foot difference in elevation.
Okay, and that's to where? I'm sorry, the?
That's right to the edge of the Chappag River. There's a dash.
I mean, the other, the other end of it. Is that the, the wall there?
The limited disturbance is the blue, there's a blue line.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the, that's the limit right there. So we're basically keeping the, the construction area at a minimum on this to reduce disturbance. And again, you know, the retaining walls have helped in terms of grading around the house itself.
What's the total disturbed, disturbed area?
It's about half an acre total.
Are there any feasible and prudent alternatives?
Well, in terms of a house site, because of the odd shape of the property, it narrows up so much on a lot of the property, you, you know, you've got zoning setbacks that almost come into contact with each other. So I, I think this is clearly the, the best area and most usable area of the property. It's, it's pretty confined if you try to push it closer to the road or further back on the property. But this, like I said, from looking at the overall property layout, it's a, it's a funny-shaped lot that just kind of opens up in the area where the house is proposed.
Right. I've, I've been on, I have to ask, if you know.
Yeah.
And, and to that point, was there consideration to push the house closer to the existing barn? Because that's a fairly wide, you know, when you think about prudent alternatives, right? It gets it further away from the river and so there is a fairly wide swath there as well.
That's true. But if you look at the footprint of the house and try to visually place it next to the barn, it's getting squeezed in by both zoning setback lines on both sides. So it would be a very tight squeeze to fit it in there.
But, but certainly further away from the river, right?
True. That's true.
Brian, was there any consideration to putting like a larger stone base to the walls? So they also act as a secondary infiltration?
Well, there is proposed stone underneath the retaining walls. I talked to Mark about that and how he's going to build the walls. Did talk about putting gravel underneath here for a base, which does absorb more water under storm conditions. So that's, I didn't mention that before, but that's a consideration in terms of, of the construction.
And then like from the start to finish of this house, you know, if it's an eight-month period, that's a long, you know, typically like one of the last things that goes on is a gutter system.
True.
You know, so during construction, you've got all that watershed on a plywooded roof.
Well, you've got a pretty long area of cell fence below that, which allows that water to kind of spread out. Again, it's, it's a, you know, we, we tried our best to keep the disturbance area as close to the footprint as possible. We've got about a little over 20, 25 feet around the outside.
That cell fence will be monitored?
Yes, that's part of the erosion control plan is monitoring after every inch of range, fall of rain. These days, we've got two, three, four, five inches.
Five times a week.
So, I mean, you know, the, the owners are really involved in the building of this, Mark being a contractor. So they're, then they live right there. So there's, they certainly will be able to check the erosion controls and do any kind of maintenance where it's required. Mark has the equipment to do that.
Yeah, so you don't see any need because of the proximity to the river, put like a secondary buffer or area of silation control?
Well, I was over there over the weekend and so, I mean, I saw the cell fence that's in there right now. I saw just a very small amount of material behind that fence. It looked like it was working pretty well. It's, it's long enough and along the, the grade line enough that provides a lot of catchment area along that contour line. So I, I was surprised because we had so much rain over the, you know, the previous weekend. I was expecting I would see more trees behind the fence, but it seemed like there was not a whole lot of stuff there.
And I'm sorry, Brian, for clarity, we're talking about the erosion on the existing property that's not been disturbed.
True.
Am I, okay, thanks.
Are you talking on the driveway that I pointed out when I was out there, where water was coming down?
Yeah, we've got the cell fence down below that in terms of catching that water. We've got a cell fence below the stockpile area, which is right below the driveway.
Should the cell fence run in, I mean, is that driveway going to be improved?
Well, the base is already there. You can actually drive right in almost all the way to the house site at this point in time.
So there's no need for erosion control fence below the driveway?
No, I didn't think so at all.
What about the electric and water trench?
Well, those are going to go in pretty fast. I mean, they, they can dig those, get the inspection and backfill them possibly the same day. So, I mean, it's a lot of work to put cell fence along those two lines.
Right, but I'm, I'm thinking like you've created a channel of disturbed, you know, kind of a, and it's going downhill.
Right.
And one of those gully washers, I can see it channelizing and washing stuff to the south of where the erosion fences. So I guess my question is, is that something that could be shooted when it was done?
Yeah. Just to, to prevent that from washing? Yeah, that could surely be done. But it can be done pretty fast, you know, and put the conduit.
But it takes a week or two for, for longer for brass to establish itself.
That's true. Well, that could be added to the, to the plan to put June netting on top of that grade after seeded to hold up.
And I'm sorry, Brian, for clarity, are you saying that the driveway will not be improved? It will stay as it is?
Well, just the end of the driveway is going to be improved. There's kind of a turnaround where you drive into the garage. But the basic path that goes through there right now is, is existing. You can actually drive almost all the way to where the house is. And that pathway has been there for a long time, so it's.
And Rob, did that answer your question? I think it sounds like it is going to be upgraded at the, as it gets closer to the house.
Well, I, I think that the driveway is tilted, going to be tilted back into the slope. So I don't know in a rain condition when that infiltration system's going in, you know, how that's protected, you know, from.
Well, they probably put some, some netting on top of that, some June or something to, to catch any, any silt going into it during construction. But again, it's, you, you've been out there, so you know it's a pretty, pretty well-traveled pathway. That's, that's pretty solid. You know, any drainage that's coming onto the driveway itself is area to the east, which is pretty much woods. It's a adjoining property, which hasn't really been improved. So that's still in its, you know, undisturbed state in terms of the area upgrading.
Deirdre, welcome to the commission. Does everybody own here for daily? That's all right.
Thank you.
This is Deirdre. Welcome. So I want to just report that Deirdre's joined.
Deirdre joined on Zoom.
Yes, I was first on Zoom.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't, yeah, all right.
And you're still on Zoom.
No, I shouldn't.
Because she was still in when, on, when she walked.
Okay, good, good. That we have that. Kathy, to your question on the moving it closer to the barn, if you look at the map, there's an IP. See how that property line comes up from the river and then goes to the corner?
Right there.
Right here.
So there's a lot less property because of zoning.
Yeah. And can you scroll up slightly? Can you scroll up slightly? So then it tilts up right the other way, right? I don't know. I don't know. What is that? The west room or? So, yeah, I mean, it's a.
And then the thing is, there's a flat area under, beneath where the house is going. It's a very flat area. It's about 40, 50 feet wide. It narrows as you walk in towards Wellers Bridge Road, that flat area, if I remember right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So where is it on this map, the flat area? Because we've got the lines. Where is that?
It's in front of the house. It's about 40 what feet wide, and then it steeply slopes down to the river.
It's kind of in the proposed patio area and the roof drain system area. That's, it kind of flattens out in that lower area. It's a good place for the cell fence to go and a good place to stop the excavation. You go below that and it gets, it gets deeper.
Brian, has there, has there been consideration of, you know, biological characteristics in, in this area and consideration for habitats there?
Well, not in terms of, of any kind of sophisticated analysis of that. I mean, I, I would refer to the property owners in terms of what they've seen for wildlife in the back, the backyard area. With river being there, there's certainly deer and other, other animals that would be in that vicinity.
I, I guess I would just say for, you know, consistency and given this is within the 200-foot buffer, I, I just suggest the consistency in, in, in a plan like this where we, you know, perhaps hire a consultant to give us a perspective on that.
Well, it's currently, it's not really a heavily wooded area. There's, there's woods there, but it's not an ideal, currently, ideal habitat the way it looks to me. I mean, it's not like pristine woods that have never been, never been touched.
This is, have we looked at the natural database diversity map?
Yeah, there's no, there's no endangered species identified in that area.
Okay.
So just looking at that doesn't give us any feedback in terms of any kind of unusual either plant or animal that, or life that would be in that area.
Yeah, and from what I remember, Brian, too, I mean, where the house is going in the disturbed area, that's pretty much all open now, so.
Pretty much. There's a few trees in there, but it's, it's, I mean, it's been, it's been mowed and kind of maintained for a while.
Did we do?
Go ahead, Brian.
All right, go ahead. Go ahead, Kathy.
I, I was just going to say, but certainly the, you know, the area along the Chappag and, and in the, in the buffer zone is, is, you know, the intent is to just sort of, you know, protect those, those buffer areas. So to the extent that, that, you know, somebody got in there and did an evaluation, I mean, we're all animal lovers. We all know what we see, but I'm certainly no expert, which is why I just simply raised it.
It's a good point.
Kathy, are you thinking like we should be consistent with all applications within this buffer zone? Regardless of, you know, not treating, not treating each one individually based on size and whether there's prudent or feasible alternatives?
Yeah, I mean, I, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, because what I, what I think, what I think about this application is there's not really a feasible and prudent alternative other than no build.
Yeah, the feasible and prudent alternative is to stay in the house you're in, but you could understand.
No, I do, I do understand that. But also is, you know, do I feel that, you know, because there's no prudent and feasible alternative, is it necessary to hire a private, you know, consultant to oversee this? Because we've done it on other applications within the 200 feet?
No, but in my opinion, every application is different.
Right, and that's what.
We're not like zoning where it's black and white. It's anything but black and white. So we should, I think we should evaluate each application on its own merit. In this case, you bring up a good point, Kathy, but remember, the regulations don't allow us to regulate wildlife. We, we can only regulate wildlife if it's a, if it's a wetland species or if it's a species that will be infected that depends on the river. So the courts have been very, very harsh on that where we can't regulate wildlife unless it's directly tied to the river. And the chances, if there's no endangered species in that area, then the chances of finding a species that's related to the river is 0.09%, you know?
Yeah, so, so it's, you know, good.
Less than that.
Good, very good discussion. I think that, you know, when the 200-foot buffer was created, it wasn't created in light of individual properties. It was 200 feet, right? So it's black and white. So, and then in terms of whether there's endangered species, that's, we don't know, right? We're just, we're just guessing.
No, it's not on the national diversity map, so there are none, is what Brian's saying.
Yeah, they, there is a map that identifies in every town, areas that, that have some endangered species. They won't say what it is, whether it's animal or plant, but they'll identify locations on the map. And there's one for the town of Roxbury that shows those areas around the, the town. But nothing in this vicinity at all. I mean, nothing in this area was identified.
And so is, is the intent just to cover endangered? I mean, is that, is that our only concern here as a wetlands, right? I guess, I guess if there was endangered, we would say, you bring in a consultant, right? But.
Well, it depends. They made these maps for state projects. And if there was an endangered species there, it doesn't mean you can't build a house. You have to find out what it is. A lot of times in Roxbury, it's bats. A lot of those circles in our town are because of bats. So, so the commission would have that information as to would this affect bats building the house there? And you would evaluate it that way.
But, but I think what Kathy's saying, are we only concerned about endangered species versus all wildlife species?
Well, we can't regulate a wildlife species unless they're tied to the river. So you can't regulate raccoons living there and you can't say it's tied to the river because they drink.
Species. I, I'm talking about, I think Kathy's point, it'd wreck me if I'm wrong, Kathy, but she, she's asking the question, is it, we're only concerned about endangered species versus all wild lives? All wetland wildlife species?
Oh, we're concerned for all wetland wildlife.
But therefore, there could be wetland species that aren't on the endangered list that could be affected by this.
I don't think so because it's cleared. It's not woods.
Yeah, yeah, that, I mean, that was the point. I'm just asking the question and.
Yeah, I, I, I hear what Kathy's saying and I welcome it.
Yeah.
But I think, and it's up to the commission. If you want to hire a consultant, fine. But I don't want to waste people's money on a guy who's going to tell me there's leaves there and trees there and some snakes and things like that. I mean, because that's not what we're allowed to regulate. It's not within our jurisdiction.
So, you know, good discussion. I, I, I think, you know, I, I, I have concerns as a committee, right? So that's why I'm raising it and, you know, that, yeah. So it sounds like there's points of view that says each property is unique. Take it unique regardless of if it's within the 200 foot and, and, you know, so good discussion. I, I guess my last point that I want to make was just, you know, the alternatives. You know, we brought up the last time, the consideration of moving the septic back, right? Because it's, it's within the 100 feet and that's, of course, you know, a concern for us. So.
I did, I did give part of the septic field further up the hill. I put the reserve area up on the upper side of the leaching field. So expansion of the field would be up higher away from the river, more than closer to the river.
But, but, but there, you know, a possible alternative is to move it outside the 200 feet, no?
Well, you have to pump it a long ways up the hill to do that, which I believe I would really use gravity rather than a pump because of those kind of things that happen every once in a while when they break. Now, one thing I'd like to mention in terms of, you know, the 100-foot that's going to be left alone. I know in a lot of projects, property owners want to do a lot of clearing for view. Uh I know in a lot of projects, property owners want to do a lot of clearing for a view. So I've talked to the owners about this, they're gonna leave that whole area that's a hundred feet um undisturbed. Which um is tempting for a lot of people to cut, do a lot of cutting to get a view.
Yeah.
So they, they're in agreement not to do any, any clearing, clear cutting between the limited disturbance and the river, which I think is an important consideration. Um, cause a lot of people like to do a lot of clearing to grab a view.
Yeah, but you know, in this case, you know, I I would think that leaving the trees there is also gonna be a buffer for noise on sixty seven.
That's true.
Yeah.
So that would still be a wildlife corridor along that hundred feet, you know, from the river up. It would remain uh remain unchanged.
So I'm always thinking way ahead too, and and I think it, you know, going on the site and looking at it, and cause I think they even said for some of the stumps that they're just gonna leave the stumps and stuff, trying to pull some of the stumps and stuff, right? But what I worry about is if down the road they sell the house.
Well, the new owners, yeah, that that does happen, I mean, people.
I mean, that's where I always go, because they said you get new owners
Right.
and then they're like, well, we wanna, you know, we're gonna impact.
Well, part of, part of a condition could be.
But in the, lots of things happen with, and then it's after the fact.
And you're never gonna stop that, but you could put a condition on any kind of approval stating that the, that area can't be disturbed ever. Or you could request that it be put into a conservation easement. Where if they did that, it'd be illegal.
Well, in terms of future work, it's it's hard to predict that. Um I think, you know, if they can get approval of this house, then it's a family that's lived in Roxbury for many years, it would remain here, they'd have a house for their family and they've got something that they could also either have uh relatives stay in, little house by the road, or or rent that out, so.
I mean, I don't get the feeling that they're gonna be moving on anytime soon, but you know, that's just been a like something that, you know, constant concern when you're, you, when you're looking at something that you know, the present owner, you know, in good faith, you you know what they wanna do.
Right, no, I know what you mean, cause a lot of people do wanna do
You know.
a lot of crowdfunding, which uh yeah, it's like, it's very prevalent.
And I had a second question for you too, cause of this rainstorm we had last week and everything, are they, is there looking at some, I mean, we're still talking about that you got your regular silt fence and are they gonna, as far as engineering it, gonna be coming up with something that is gonna, you know, because I think we're gonna be going in the direction that what we had isn't gonna be so infrequent, and if you have a project, um, the only thing I would say here too, cause I saw where it said, um the sediment deposits would be removed when they reach approximately one half the height of the barrier, and I'm like, is that sufficient now or?
It is, cause half the height's not gonna knock the barrier down.
Okay.
In terms of the location of the silt fence, it runs pretty much right along the grade below the the work area. That's where ninety percent of any material is gonna come down during construction. Um I like silt fence, it works well, um hay bales are, well, they they last longer than hay bales, with bales in, you have to be careful, you you know, get them end to end tight, cause water will go between them a lot of times, and they're not as high as silt fence, and they deteriorate over time also. Much more so than silt fence does, so personally, I like silt fence, I, it just, it's been around for years and it does work really well. So, um I think this is really where it's gotta go, is right on the bottom of the, the area along that grade line.
If, if I could ask the, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Um, it looks like right now the hundred foot setback um is is right at or very near that the
Yes.
bottom, the toe of the slope, but right where that shelf area is.
Right.
Um, is there any restriction on on not allowing him to put a second row of silt fence on that shelf area?
No.
Um, because it was, it's the same concern that I expressed in the notes that I sent to Julie before last meeting is that, you know, and again, if we had storms like we had last year or last week, it's gonna go right through that one set of silt fence, but if, but if we can stop it on that shelf, it's not gonna go into the, into the river.
I agree with you on that. Well, there's no problem about doing a double row here, if that would make everybody happy, I could sure do that.
When you approve a permit, you could put any conditions on it that you want. Uh, they could argue the commit, conditions, but normally people don't. To extra level of um.
Just insurance, yeah.
Well, the problem I see a lot, on a lot of jobs with silt fence is people running down the hill and turn it back up, and it it hits a low point where all this
Creates a funnel.
One, yeah, it goes a funnel and that blows it right out. If it's spread along the grade, it usually can spread that water and material pretty evenly, but I mean, we could do a second row, it's not a big deal.
And what's your total, did you calculate the total area, work area, is it like a third of an acre or?
It's about a half an acre.
Half an acre, yeah, so it's, it's pretty compact.
We tried to make it as compact as possible, I mean, uh the fact that it's a two-story house, you know, cuts the the footprint down. Um, adding the retaining walls helps with grading and keeping the the disturbance a little closer to the walls. Um, a lot less cuts and fills on that, so, you know, I think the owners have been agreeable to try to keep this as compact as possible.
Any other questions from the commission?
Yeah, I I just had.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I just had one more question, um, it's sort of on the point that um you know, Brian's making that this is sort of the best location, or, you know, there isn't another location. I I just wanna hypothesize for a minute, you know, so this is a thirty three hundred square foot house. What if it was fifty five hundred square feet? Would we view this differently?
Depends. Depends on a lot of things, you can't really I I understand the question, but I don't think a fifty five hundred square foot house would fit.
It could be.
And so, and so then the question is, does a thirty three hundred square foot house fit?
Well, that's up to the commission, looks like it does to some of us, and it may not look that way to others, and that's why we all need to make our own decisions.
Kathy, I think that if I saw a fifty five hundred square foot house, I'd ask as a prudent and feasible alternative to shrink the house.
A- and so similarly, for a thirty three hundred, is that an alternative to shrink the house?
But what does shrinking the house do? Still, the disturbance is the same.
It pushes it back.
We want three bedrooms, which we all want, because, you know, you got kids and stuff, so the septic wouldn't change.
It it pushes it further away from the river, right? That's, I, I mean, I, that's, that's sort of what I'm thinking, right? So.
Right, but we have to look at impact. Does the house as it is have a potential to impact the river? With the controls that have been put in place, that's the question you have to answer.
It doesn't have the potential to impact the river. A- and I I guess I would say the, you know, we set the two hundred feet with the goal of protecting that river.
The two hundred foot is an arbitrary arbitrary number that the regulations from the state allow each town to set its own setbacks. It doesn't give you the right to um regulate those areas. It gives you a right to require a permit, no matter what, if you are in those areas. And then the commission could only regulate those areas if there's a direct impact to wetlands. The courts made that ruling because the regulations don't give us the authorization to regulate upland areas, and only, it's all about rivers and wetlands. So you cannot deny somebody from building in a buffer area if they prove that there's no potential to impact the the resource.
Uh, no, that's super helpful, thank you for, you know, providing, you know, additional context.
It's very complicated, and the courts have made a lot of rulings over the years that have made it very hard for commissions to keep up, you almost have to be a lawyer, it's ridiculous. But, but that's what they've ruled.
So Brian, in your professional opinion, does this project have any potential to impact the wetlands?
No.
Brian, do we do pollutant loading on uh on the stormwater discharge? Pollutant loading calculations?
No.
Is there a need for that?
I don't believe so for this single family dwelling, I mean, if it were more of a, maybe an industrial uh or uh other kind of use where you might have um, you know, materials that would be possibly hazardous.
Okay.
Which, I mean, um, most homeowners have some cleaning products that could be that way, but
But the stormwater guidance documents require pollutant loading for nitrogen and phosphorus, which are the two main threats to all our water water courses nowadays, it's no longer pollution from factories and stuff, those are the the two things that are killing lakes and our resources and rivers, so as, as you know, the the guidance document recommends that there are, there are pollutant loading calculations. I would agree if you think it's really it's a far uh hit to have a problem because it's going into a system.
Yes, we've basically tripled the size of the system I had originally designed for them, so we're you know, we're over a nine inch rainfall rating for the system. Um, so I I I feel comfortable that whatever comes off the roof in this area is gonna go into that drain system, that's why I I changed it from just a dry well to a linear system with a lot more capacity.
Okay. Just want the commission to know, it is in the guidance to to poll- pollutant loading calculations, and their focus is nitrogen and phosphorus, not oils or other things that may come off a roof, is oil, cause asphalt shingles definitely have. People think roof water is clean water, you you wouldn't wanna drink it, you may wanna put water your plants with it, but.
So therefore, that brings up another, you've opened the door to something else, you know, so, fertilizers and stuff on this property within two hundred feet of the Shafag River.
Well, it's been shown a hundred feet.
No, I know, but it's within two hundred feet, is what I'm saying, I I'm just saying, do we, can we make it, should we make a restriction that no chemicals, fertilizers, weed kills can be u- utilized on this property?
How do you enforce that?
Oh, I don't know, though the property owners are here, you could ask them.
Are you organic as it is, so it's not gonna happen. We eat organic and we don't have problems.
What I was saying, oh, studies have shown a hundred feet breaks that stuff down, and they have that hundred foot wall. It doesn't break it down if it goes directly into a stream and then it goes into a river, but.
I would think there's more to it than that, the hundred feet also has to do grades, velocity of the water.
And dilution.
Right.
And and to that point, do you think that this grade is a help or a hindrance to to in that effort?
Are you asking me?
I just generally, yeah.
I don't know, it does have a flat area below it, so that's gonna slow the water down, and then there's a
And there's the infiltration aspect of it too.
And it doesn't go, it goes into the flat area and then it spreads out, I could see areas where water settles in the flat area. It doesn't go straight down that hill.
Yeah, you also have to consider the soils on the site are basically sand and gravel being near the river. So they're, they're very well-drained soils, I mean, a lot of, a lot better than most.
And there's not a lot of lawn area.
No, it's a, it's a very small area around the house.
Yeah. But I had to ask the question. Anything else from the commission, because I'd like to get to the public? Anybody from the public have any comments on this application? You mean, you're all here for just kinda watch? You. Okay. So we had a public hearing, nobody cares. All right, any other information that the commission wants submitted, because once you close a public hearing, no further information can be submitted. And I need to remind everybody that you can't talk about this stuff amongst ourselves. You shouldn't do that with regular applications, but with public hearings, it becomes very important that there's no talking between ourselves about the application.
I just have one thing, so I wanna revisit the um, the retaining wall.
Yeah.
And I think I I had brought it up to Brian for the last meeting, was um I I know, just tell me again, cause I know you said you were planning using gravel, right? But I guess my question was, was this gonna be like a a concrete? Um, or is it just gonna be the stone? A a regular?
Regular retaining stone, drywall.
Okay, all right, okay.
Parks Masons, it'll be both.
Well, yeah, no, I know that, so that, yeah, that's why I was, I was wondering if it was gonna be, okay, so you're talking about a regular silent retaining wall that that's what you're gonna be doing with the, like a stone?
Yes.
Base, okay.
Is there any other information the commission moved the like from the applicant? We talked about pollutant loading. Kathy talked about hiring a consultant, let's talk about that first. If you hire a consultant, whether it be a environmental one or a peer review by another engineer?
I I don't think it's necessary.
I I don't think it is in this case.
Yeah.
I don't either.
Yeah, I I'm in favor of it, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, for the record. Sierra, if you're out there?
Go ahead.
Are you in favor of hiring a consultant, whether environmental or engineering peer review?
I don't know. I'm I'm listening to everything, but um I don't know.
Okay, well, it sounds like a majority of the commission's not in favor of that, we don't have to.
Yeah, I don't think, I'm li- I'm leaning no, cause I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
In my opinion.
And then uh, do we want calculations for pollutant loading?
Again, I don't think it's necessary in this case.
I agree.
I'll follow suit of that.
All right, Kathy?
I I'm in favor.
Okay, I give her credit. Sierra?
I said, um, same.
Sue?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
Not with this particular application.
So I think we've had, we have all the information we need to make a decision?
Yeah, I think the only other thing that I had raised was about the location of the septic, I know Brian answered it, thank you, Brian, but that was.
All right, so um, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? So, guess we didn't need to make a special meeting, too. We will now move on to our regular meeting. Welcome, Roxbury, to the regular meeting of the Roxbury Inland Wetlands and Water Courses for August twenty six, twenty twenty four. Twenty seven. We're at the summer. Um, I'll start with Rob as the court order.
Rob, Oregon.
Sue Fatch.
John Smollett.
Teacher Taylor.
Chris Aggerty.
Chris Aggerde.
Sarah Gorglio.
Kathy Ross.
Okay, we have a quorum. All the, um, the five regular members are here, so we're going to leave it that way. First up, um.
Regular meeting minutes.
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from July 23rd, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All business. Dwayne and Bonnie Murray, 124 Wells Bridge House, construction of a three bedroom dwelling. We could have a deliberation, but I'm letting you know you don't have to vote tonight. You could push this off. You have 65 days from the closing of the public hearing to make a decision. I don't really think there's a reason to push it off, but somebody else may needs time to think about it.
I'm ready to vote. Sue?
I'm ready to vote, but, yeah.
And then Sierra, are you ready to vote?
I'm ready.
Okay. So any deliberations? Do we need to talk about anything?
Yes. Okay, because the only thing was, um, which I brought up, even though, you know, because I'm thinking way, way in the future, that I wouldn't want the area to be disturbed that 100 feet down to the river.
Right.
Okay, so, and I can't remember now because I think we've had some problems before. Do we leave it up to, um, right, what we choose, how we?
Well, we've put markers, we've required markers. You know, permanent markers at that, you know, whatever.
Sign on them.
Yeah.
Or a wall.
Stones or some kind of stone wall.
I mean, yeah, and that's something that I think, you know, the homeowner, that's not, I think that's going to be, I doubt, objectable, but I just worry that, you know.
Well, the thing is, for me, that's already in place. You can't go on the bank of a river and cut down trees without a permit.
Well, you can.
Well, well, it happens and then you go through the violation process. And we haven't had a serious incident with tree cutting along that river, I think ever, where we had to have an owner pay a ton of money because it is possible to put back pretty big trees to replace.
Timor, Timorac happened in 2002.
Wow, you remember the year. So 20 years it's been. What month was it?
September.
Jack's book was what last year or the year before?
Um, so I, I think it would make me feel more comfortable if there was part of, if there was a, a condition on there that some sort of markers that, um, would be marking the area for, um, for no disturbance from the, you know, in that 100 foot line going down to the river.
What if they come in for an application and selectively cut trees? So they have a little corridor.
Well, well, the thing about it is, is at least it's known that it would need to be, that once again, this is like whether, you know, a tree, trees get damaged or something with the present, you know, homeowners. Or once again, if the property gets sold. But at least that it's noted that this is an area that, I mean, you know.
You want markers?
Yeah, I'm kind of thinking if it was my property, I wouldn't want markers.
I wouldn't want.
But I'm thinking about like, like land trust markers tacked out to a tree. You know.
Yeah, I'm not talking about anything. I mean, is it that's, is that stopping anything? But at the same token, I don't know if that's a, if that, you know, truly that they enjoying their property is that a hindrance for them? So I look at it that if it was, I don't know, if it was my property and that I love the river and wanted to keep it in the pristine shape in that area, then I would be, it, 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 it wouldn't be an issue. But maybe I'm thinking that's not.
Well, I feel they're going to be there a long time. Somebody clear cuts that hill, I'll be in Shepott River heaven. I won't be here. So I don't really care. And I'd hate to, if it was my property, I have something there, you know, no disturbance zone. They know it. It's in the regulation. You can't do that. You, you know, people are going to speed. You can put up all the signs and speed bumps.
How about we just have a little quick tally of who would ride or who would?
I'm saying it's fine as is.
I, I'm going to go against you, Sue. Sorry. No markers.
Okay.
Yeah, it, to me, it's the same. I don't think they're necessary. I'm not sure what you're going to do. You know, it's kind of like you go into a restaurant restroom and it says employees must wash hands, you know? And you know that.
Sierra?
Um, I am not for markers either.
Okay. That it?
Yeah.
All right. So I'll look for a motion. And when you make a motion, if there's conditions.
Later.
State the conditions.
Isn't that being like any, any comments after this, the motion, the second?
Well, let's talk about conditions. One thing I learned from a recent terrible NOV in Bridgewater is a project like this is, when it's built, it's all good. So the biggest concern is during construction. And I think a condition has to be that the wetland enforcement officer be made aware five, a week before the project begins. Um, you know, any kind of digging or anything. And that, um, he report on it month. So that he's going out there regularly to make sure that, um, things are going as planned. And number three, if the applicant or contractor see or notice a, a, a problem, like water broke through during a big storm and it went down to the river, that they notify us of that. Because I had a contractor who knew that his pumping of a pond wasn't working and he silted up the stream all the way to the Shippensburg River. And if he had notified or if we had conditions where the wetland enforcement officer had to go out there, probably wouldn't have happened. That, that's.
I wanted to add was, um, I know Brian had said that there wouldn't be a problem with putting the, um, secondary silt fence.
Right.
If anybody's in, if anybody's interested in that, but since it's not on the, on the, um, plans right now, then I think that if we're interested in that, it needs to be stated as a condition.
I also think it, the utilities, the two lines, the water line and the electrical line, there's a, a 14 foot grade difference from the garage to the, the house downhill. That, that needs to be protected as it's done with Ju, stapled in Judas cloth to prevent erosion.
Okay, so I'll look for a motion.
I'm sorry, Russ, could I ask a question?
Um, we're ready to go into a motion, Kathy, so it's, you, you can, but we're ready to vote.
I, I just had a question about the monthly wetlands enforcement officer reports. Are those written reports and what specifically is we reporting on?
Just the condition of the property as construction proceeds.
But I would think mostly erosion protection.
Right. Does the erosion control being maintained properly? Um, it'd be a good idea to have them go out after any major storm to make sure that things are still stable. Things like that.
I, I just wanted to add a little clarity to it, so I appreciate it. I, I, I assume that he, he, he sends something in writing or how does that work?
Yeah, it's in the monthly report.
Oh, okay. So he sends something written. Okay, we got it. Thank you. Thanks for the clarity.
Okay, I'll look for a motion.
I'll move to approve this as a regulated activity with the conditions that a second row of silt fence be installed below the proposed silt fence. And that the utility trenches after they're backfilled are protected with a Jude cloth or something similar to prevent erosion.
Anything else?
The, uh, monthly report from the enforcement officer and Rob has to say it.
He's, and that the, uh, uh, wetlands enforcement officer, uh, reports monthly on the condition of the site. Specifically for erosion control.
And there's a rainstorm that he goes in.
Yeah, and after any rain event in excess of one inch. One inch, uh, requires a visit from the wetlands enforcement officer.
And that the wetlands enforcement officer be notified one week before any start of work.
And the wetlands enforcement officer is notified before, one week before the start of the work.
That's it. That's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Sierra was an aye, so it's five zero. Uh, application's approved. Move on. Okay. I A W E, 65 Main River Road, construction of eight bedroom dwelling with sanitary system, well grading and driveway. Um, just want, there is a public hearing on this on September 10th, right?
Yes, yes.
At seven o'clock. It will be live. If you can't make it live, you need to let Julie know so she will set it up to be soon. I want to report that we do have our experts' reports. Everybody get them?
Yes.
So please read them. Have questions? I told both our experts no need to come tonight. I told Gail no need to come tonight because we're not going to really discuss anything on that application. Mostly because if we do, we have to do it again during the public hearing. So it's better to just have it all in one place. So that's that. Um, Charles Haver and Stuart, Three South Berry Road installation of additional leach fields. Who went out to look at this?
Kathy and I did.
Well, oh, yeah, yeah. Rob and I did.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Yes, this is adding something to the leaching field to make it a little bit bigger septic system. Um, which is right in the same kind of area as the existing system is right in. Extend one trench and put one trench below the, the above.
Brian, Newtown has moved to 100 feet for septics. Is that? Is that?
Well, not really. The, the health department setback is 50 feet. They, they have their own regulations, which they're thinking about changing. But, um, in, in Roxbury, they go by the regular, the regular health code regulations.
Right.
They have some special ones for Newtown and Sandy Hook area that they instituted a long time ago, which a lot more restrictive than the standard regular health code.
Oh, okay. So it's just for the village?
Yeah, because they've had a lot of trouble in the past. That's why they, they developed those additional regulations.
Hundred foot?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to understand that. I know it used to be 25 feet and we used to always have a conflict that the health department approved it. And then did we have the right to deny it?
Well, there's, there's some caveats on that.
Yeah.
If the house was built before, I think, 1980, then they can go to the 25. But if it was built after that, it's got to be the 50.
Okay. So this meets that?
Yes.
So Sue, you want to report?
Yeah, um, the only question I had is, we're, because you have, um, I think Rob and I had the question was, because there's this, um, water course over here. So there's a small opening between the, this, uh, hedge kind of. And closer to the house is that where you, and there's a tree right there. Is that where you're planning on going in to do this work or?
Yeah, and they can also, also go around the other side of the house.
Oh, okay. All right.
To get in that way. There's a way to get around that too.
Okay, all right. Because that, that just, I think was, uh, a concern, just making sure that, you know, it wasn't going to be interrupted that way.
Yeah, there's, there's enough opening in the wall here to get through, bring materials in here.
Okay.
So it's pretty much just a lawn area?
Yeah.
In general.
So, so Brian, that 50 foot setback, other than the silt fence, there'll be no disturbance within that?
Correct.
Because the access is from the other side?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't have any problem with this.
Yeah, I, I didn't either. And the only question was how, how, what, you know.
All right, I'll look for a motion.
John, you said Chris Hodge too?
Yeah, I, I, I had no problem with it. Kathy, did you want to say something?
Uh, yeah, I was just, you know, it was pretty wet when we were there. Is there, you know, it seems very straightforward. Thanks, Brian. I, I just had a question about, um, you know, did, does there, did, has it been perked or anything like that in that area?
Yeah, I did a soil test and a perk test in that area. Um, that's, I did that back in 1997. So it's, but I'm, I'm sure that the soil is the same as it was back in, in those days. It hasn't changed in terms of the hydrology. Um, on the second sheet, there does show some, uh, some fill put in to elevate the system up above the groundwater. There's a cross section in town toward the bottom of the page.
Is it, is it a lot of work and time consuming to, um, sort of upgrade that 1997 testing?
Uh, well, the test would be the same. I mean, it takes hundreds and thousands of years for soil to change. So the whale water table would still be the same as it was back in that time. But those kind of things don't, don't really change. It's based on the soils in the ground.
And what, do we have that report?
Um, I don't think I submitted that, but that's in the health department office. They, they approved this already, the health department did. And they approved the original plan also, from the tank and the first field was put in.
Okay, I'll look for a motion.
I'll, I'll move to approve this as a regulated activity.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next.
Thank you.
We're going to.
Thank you, Brian.
11 Holmes Road. Removal and replacement of accessory building for home gym report on sidewalk.
Over here for Holmes Road? Kathy, you want to report on your sidewalk? Did somebody else go?
Yeah, I went.
Did you go with her?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Did you want to go ahead and comment, John?
Um, you can if you want, but, well, all right. The, um, the way it was state, you had the center of the garage on there.
Um, I had kind of got a message earlier today from Julie and I don't know exactly what happened out there. Um, I do know that, um, I state the two corners of the barn on this side of the house. I think it's in, and the two corners there as well. And I also, the two states you probably saw, river two, they come off the deck. I also had state down the groundwater recharge system as well. I don't know if those states were moved since the time I state it.
Yeah, I, I don't know because that, that was all that we can find. There, there was something there about the, do you remember Kathy, a drive or something like that or, uh?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm having a hard time seeing this. I'm trying to get closer. But yeah, we just saw, I think there was a stake for the center, a stake for the end of the deck. It was hard, you know, to, we just, it was hard to really understand the footprint. And then there is a bathroom in there, right? So there's a septic and we didn't see anything for septic.
And the septic is uphill outside the regulated area. That's why I did not state that.
Okay.
But I do know, when I, I think that on August 6th, the, the word boat stake there with the barn, two states of the deck and two states of the groundwater system. Um, the owner was aware of it. He would do anything. I don't know what.
Yeah, maybe, uh, did, so was it possible to stake it, the whole thing? The perimeter?
Well, couldn't you get a sense of where?
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, I, I got a sense of where it was. And even though it wasn't state, I didn't have the exact dimensions, but I went home and looked at the map and, and, um, yeah, I.
yeah, I, in the, in the end, I didn't have a problem with it.
Right, because it's flat, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you tell me, I, I'm, this, this map, okay, so it shows existing barn and the, the dark line is the new barn and it appears to be just a small amount larger than the old barn. Am I describing this picture correctly?
Correct. The existing barn is slightly, is, um, smaller than the proposed barn, yes. And it tours. Um, I don't know where it's with. Let's just say this to the east.
And the corner of the barn to the pond is how far away? I am.
The point is about fifty feet to the well from the barn, fifty feet.
Gosh, it's, it seemed, um.
Where we're at, you know, if you look at the fifty barn and the post barn, we're not changing that much. We could slide it further away, but we were trying to keep an opening between the, the house and the barns or those assets between that area. Mainly so that they can get to the septic tank to pump it out. Otherwise, there's going to be one line all the way around the backside of that.
Yeah, I mean, it's a pristine pond. There's water that, you know, flows into it and then I guess it feeds another pond thereafter and, um, you know, this is, yeah, it's, I, I, I don't, I can't, I'm struggling with viewing this. I apologize. I have to switch screens here, but, um, you know, all of the collection of that water and where it's gonna go is, it's not clear to me.
Well, just to clarify one thing, the roof drainage is being collected in the groundwater. Reach out to them and we got the needed off to the side.
Could you?
Not creating one of our itself. Right now, there isn't anything.
Right.
It's, they haven't, they're just going there.
Um, yeah.
With proposed activities in, in the established, you know, one area. Already, we're not doing any tree plant or anything of that nature.
Is this a full foundation on slab on, on grade?
This would be a frost wall with a crawl space.
And, and there's room to get footing drains. They're gonna go into infiltrators also or today?
No, they can't, they can't interconnect.
So they'll go to the.
We separate.
To daylight. And where are the spoils going?
Well, if there are any spoils, they'll be taken off elsewhere.
But during construction, when the excavation's done?
Yes, but they'll be taking somewhere else on the site, outside of any regulated areas that, uh.
We probably need that noted on the map with.
I believe I indicate that in my notes. If not, it could be the, uh.
Rob, would you consider going out to take a look? I mean, it's, it's.
Well, we've been there.
Yeah, we have.
Did you already go? Okay.
Yeah, we, well, we went there to, when they proposed to dig out the pond. So we know the property.
Okay, so did that happen?
I mean, it's flat and the water, roof water's being handled and infiltrators, which we asked for. I don't, I don't see the impact.
And just the limited disturbance will be the silt fence?
That is correct on the downhill side, correct. That's the, if you go to the second sheet, I believe, fifth to second sheet, I can remember.
This one?
Oh, no, go back. Somebody, it's not showing up. I thought I had, I know I wanted my plans to show the actual limited disturbance, but. Anyway, to, I. Yeah, the, you had to, the downhill side would be silt fence.
Could you say that again? I'm, I'm sorry. I, I couldn't hear.
The limited disturbances on the downhill side close to pond is limited by the silt fencing. We're not planning going further than that. Which would be east of the barn.
Any other questions? So. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve this as a regulated activity with the condition that the soil stockpile area is noted on the plan outside the hundred-foot buffer zone. And that the limit of disturbance line is noted as the silt fence on the downhill side of the activity.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Sierra? You out there?
Yeah, I, I, I'm here. Aye, sorry.
Okay. Um, opposed, motion carried. The application's approved. Thank you. Next.
Okay. Next, we're going into new business. Um, two oh eight East Flag Swamp Road, proposed subdivision of lot into two parcels. Lot one will be ten point zero six acres. And with dwelling and that would be existing dwelling and lot two will be seventy-one point two one seven acres of raw land.
Um, yeah.
Do we have a map?
Yeah.
There was a map on.
All right, can I just explain? Because we have, we have some new members. Of course, one of them knows all about subdivisions, but on subdivisions, state regulations, wetland commissions really don't have anything to do with approval of subdivisions. But in Roxbury, before planning takes it, we look at it to determine if the subdivision will cause a wetland issue down the road. So like if it'll cause a wetland crossing when, if you subdivide it different, you, you wouldn't need that crossing. So that's what we're looking at. So go ahead.
Um, Mark Reif and Hunter likes engineer, um, Stu Summers Company for the record. Uh, basically, this is the eighty-one acre, more or less parcel of land that you, you started to estate owns. Um, Mr. Mr. Sardzki had passed away. The family has wanted to sell off the house. They don't want to be stuck maintaining that house. So the idea was to create a separate lot just for the area of the house. About ten acres. Rest of the land would be me, while raw land is noted on the application. Um, the family will retain that for the time being. No plan at all. For any further subdivision of that, but that could potentially happen. But we're not proposing any activities in this. To simply creating a lot at this time that all we're here for at this time.
I see no problem here. Are there any wetlands or streams?
There are wetlands on the property. Some wetlands have been flagged, um, toward the north from, uh, where the Federicks acquired a piece of land from Keith Sardzki doing wetlands to achieve with that. But there are wetlands on the property. We have not gone, the owner, you know, there's no point spending the expense flagging all those wetlands. Some of their areas are quite expensive. And because we're not creating, we're not doing any disturbance.
Would you show me where on the property?
Could you go back one sheet?
Sure.
So, um, to the north side, there was a piece of land that was acquired by the Federicks. Uh, there were wetlands that were associated with that.
Okay.
That were flat for that particular lot line revision application.
Right.
Um, there are, there are little breaks and goes that went through here. There is a wetland crossing of the ecstasy driveway, the cobra that goes there. But, you know, that main, primary main house area is all upland areas. There are stall up till these are very graded, go way up the top here.
Okay, so the, the access to the seventy-one acres, you don't have to go through wetlands to get into it?
No, we, they could come, we dissolved that thing off to the north, south side of the property here. We dissolved that thing in the, I mean, they could come this way around.
Correct.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve the subdivision from a wetland.
Can we approve this tonight?
Yes. So it's, it's not an application. It's a.
Yeah, but I, I don't mean to muddy up the waters here, but I'm confused. When we did like the wood subdivision, subdivision, that was a subdivision. Right? And we had all drainage and not that we needed on this, but for a subdivision, we're looking at house locations, driveway grades.
Right, because there was actual construction proposed.
Okay.
This is just drawn a line. So how do you deny it?
Right, no, I agree. I just was confused on what you said about subdivisions in general.
Oh, I meant in this case where it's raw land and nobody's got a plan yet. They already took their first cut, right? Is that what the lot is? I thought they get a first cut there.
Here?
That's the reason why it was referred.
Okay.
Is because there was a first cut.
Okay.
So we wanted to be clear that you, you can't just, you can't do a first cut and then cut again.
Right.
It had to be a subdivision.
Okay. So, so do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this subdivision. A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. But it's enough. What's next?
Okay, ten Old Lane. Construction of thirty-bedroom, single-family home. And that may for Barbara Conti and. Old Lane.
We're not outside.
It's the second house, second road in on.
There you go.
And left from sixty-seven from Bridgewater.
Oh, okay.
Gravel.
All right.
Look, thank you commissioners for.
Old Lane.
My name is Robert Arcanti and my, my wife and I would like to build our forever home.
They all say that.
Well, I'm telling you. So we're, uh, we purchased this land last, last year. It has a existing barn on there now that's quite old. And, uh, with a gravel driveway that, that leads to it from this gravel road. And we'd like to, um, pu- put up a ranch there.
Oh.
Grab the road from the other side.
I bypassed the, the purple.
I got approval from him.
Right, okay. I was gonna say, you're wasting your time.
Yeah, I already got approval from, uh, from, from Paul.
So this is, this is not the piece that the church had bought and then?
No, no, that's me.
Okay, that's you. Okay.
Up to the road next to me.
So this, you, you have to go by Paul's house?
Yes.
Look at his purple fence. Is it still purple?
No, no, and I pay the toll, you know what I mean? Every time I go by.
All right, I just, all right. I, I didn't know there was a lot in there.
Okay. Yes, it's a four-acre piece and, um, we're, we're, what we'd like to is put a nice fairly level driveway and all gravel. And when I know we're encroaching a bit on some of the restricted areas, you will all see, but, um.
By how much?
Well, there's a little piece of the house on the end here. It's probably, I mean, to guess, I would say maybe seventy square feet is in the restricted area. And then, of course, the, the turnaround area for the, for the driveway.
Is that an intermittent stream that, that line?
There is a, there's a man-made pond up in this area.
Okay.
So it looks like a big crater with a, with a stream coming in into this crater. And then there's a pipe with a standpipe coming up.
Yeah.
So the water can exhaust from there. Now, right now, there's, the, the, the stream just goes in and out. There's no, there's no standing water in there now, and I don't plan on having any standing water.
But what is that line that, that goes from the corner of the house up?
This, that's, that's just from my, my engineers.
That's a hundred-foot setback.
That's a hundred.
Oh, okay.
Hundred-foot setback.
Just wanted to make sure. So a corner of the house is.
Yeah, there's a little piece of the house right there.
Yeah.
Again, there, um, kind of extends into that. My wife.
Where's your roof drain that's gonna go?
Well, I was planning on the, the houses. I do not want a basement.
Right.
I really don't care for this. So I'd like to have it, uh, slab on grade and I'd like to have no roof, no roof drains at all. Would it, I'd like to put a metal roof.
Gravel around the house.
Just gravel around the house.
A lot of people are going that way.
Well, you know, they got a clean gutters.
Yeah.
So I was thinking, what I, there, there's a, there's a wonderful, uh, field stone wall that runs right through the property there. And of course, I'll have to take some of that down and I'd like to border this driveway with that stone wall. As you can well see, that's proposed. This, this stone wall to, for, for the elevation change. So this, this area will remain basically undisturbed.
Okay. And does the driveway need drainage? Like where it meets the road?
Well, it's a gravel road and I, I, I think we're gonna be fairly level going all the way out. So I would think that the water, rainwater would just follow that level.
You'd be surprised.
Well, I.
I should be surprised.
Well, of course, I mean.
You should have your engineer look at that.
Well, he has.
Okay.
Ralph Gallagher.
Okay.
Has, um.
And does he have a drainage plan for the driveway?
I beg your pardon?
A drainage plan for the driveway?
I don't, I don't believe I have that. No, sir.
You need, you need, don't you think? Or no? You want to go look at it first?
Well, we are gonna have to look at it because it's within the one hundred foot.
Right.
So, but in the meantime, to save time, we probably should decide tonight to save you time.
Well, thank you.
We're gonna require.
Unless you don't care and you want to wait thirty days.
It's, it's August.
Well, we find that we don't, we don't approve any driveways anymore without drainage plants because we've been hurt and hurt in the past by, by that, especially where the driveway meets the road. There becomes a, a problem with, is this the town's water causing this issue? Is it the driveway? So we require driveway drainage.
Well, I don't believe this is a town road at all.
It's a private, private.
Still, it's private. So I don't want to allow somebody to dump water on somebody else's property.
I think he's in there with a swell.
There is, yeah. Ri- ri- right along, right along, along here, there's a swell that runs down.
So either we could go look and tell you next month whether you need a driveway drainage plan or you could just do one.
Oh.
And we'll come, we'll still look, but then next meeting, we'll be prepared to make a decision.
Okay, I'll talk to Ralph, uh, Gallagher, uh, about that.
Yeah, and if Ralph says he don't need a put it in writing.
Sure.
He's a P E, he's got a stamp it.
Yeah.
Then we could go at him.
Absolutely, absolutely, Ralph.
No.
So that's basically what, um, the septic over here outside of that restricted area and is the house state? I beg your pardon? Is it state? Uh, yes, I have some stakes up now, but I, we, we made a slight change, so I have to extend the stakes down a bit. The, these, these two, I'm gonna, I'll place soon. When, when you folks think you want to go up there, you know? But I'll do it soon.
Whatever, whatever you want within the next month.
Oh, it'll definitely be before.
We have a month, but we don't like doing it the day of the meeting.
No, 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 I understand. Yeah.
Yeah, so when you're, when you're ready, you could contact Julie at the land use department and she will let us know.
They've been holding my hand very well.
She's, she's awesome. It's an awesome group down there.
So.
Him, I don't know about, but.
So that's basically where, where, I mean, I.
Yeah, could we get the driveway stakes unless you're gonna be out there with us?
Obviously, if I know when your folks are gonna show up there, I'd be happy to walk through it with you. I'd love to do that. So we can kind of get the vision of, uh, of what's going on, or what our vision is of, of this, this whole thing.
Okay.
You know, that would be great.
All right.
Really great.
So you talked to RJ there and contact Julie when you're ready for us to come.
Outstanding.
All right. Are, are you moving into town from somewhere?
We'd love to, yes.
From where?
From Danberg.
Oh, so parts of the outskirts are beautiful.
Well, we live in a very nice area in Danbury right now. But it's, our, our, our daughter, our only child got married last month and she lives in Southbury. She lives in Southbury. No, no, she lives in Southbury and we want to be, uh, we would like to be the close grandparents if we're blessed.
Okay.
The grandchildren, we want to be the close ones. So, and we've been looking in Roxbury for so long, Carol and I. And we found this piece here that we.
Yeah, well, I wanted to welcome you to town because that's what we do on the commission. We welcome, because we're the first pains in the asses you have to deal with.
Yeah, he told me that.
I'd like to welcome you to. I'd like to welcome you to town.
Thank you so much.
And Carol, you too.
So. That great, thank you so much. Thanks for your time.
Okay.
Outstanding.
What's next?
Okay, we're going to the other property thought of the one on Baker Road. After the fact, application of spraying of Japanese knotweed. And they pull up the map for that.
Oh, you're not building a church?
No, I'm not.
Okay. You're killing knotweed. The devil made you do it, right?
It'll be a smaller property, smaller use.
Alright.
Yeah, I'm not sure how this works, so.
Well, come on up.
Thanks. And Shane Newman is the one.
Yeah, for the record, Shane Newman from yardscapes, landscape professionals and be the person spraying the Japanese knotweed.
Okay. Just so you know. Roxbury has a kind of a unique. Um part in our reg that doesn't allow. Addition of fertilizer herbicides, pesticides within a hundred feet of water, of course, without a permit.
We found that out.
Al- although it's very hard to enforce, we try to let. All the chemical lawn companies know, cause some of them go into the wetlands and spray for ticks. And unfortunately that kills everything. Right?
Yeah.
And who goes into the wetlands? There's no reason to spray in there. So we changed our regs a few years ago to, to include. And usually you could get John. Just call John and he could come out and approve it with an inquiry form. But since this was going on. John decided you should come in, have the commission approve it because there was a site on Falls Road. Where, where we made that guy come in and. Kind of educate us. So we're kind of educated on it now. We understand that knotweed is a vicious plant. Pull it up and throw it over there and then it grows over there. It's crazy. So. John, you, you got a complaint, is that?
Yeah, I got a call about it. So when I did get the call. I went out there and I talked to your technicians who were applying it and they stopped right away.
Okay.
So then I, then we started this procedure just because it is within the wetlands and there's an intermittent stream there.
Okay. So. We obviously want them to go ahead and kill the knotweed as long as they do it. Um, like the other people did where it takes several sprays, right?
It's, it's a process. Um, the timing is important. Generally what you have to do is. What the studies have shown and what we've found from past experiences, cut it down in June. Let it, let it, let some regrowth come back. Spray it once in usually July, once in August and potentially a spraying in September. And that, that's the most effective way to try to control that weed.
So do we screw you on this?
It may be a next year thing. That's all, I know, I respect that. I mean, we, we talked, you know.
Okay.
We'll get one spraying and, and then I don't know if this approval is good for next year as well. To, cause we're gonna be doing this, probably take us three years or two years to knock it all out.
Yeah. We can make it for five.
Yeah, it would be, yeah, that's what we found. It's usually about a three year process. If we get, you know, it starts to dissipate, but you know, stuff is vicious. It'll tend to come back.
Right. I know there was a needle that can inject.
And I've talked to them. I have a company in England too, and I tried to buy one, but they discontinued manufacturing them. Looking for a use which puts an electric shock right into them. And I said, Shane, I'll buy one and we're now in business. Cause it's in states, I, I'm in Oxford, I have a business in Oxford as well. And it's brutal there.
I know.
Not as much anymore, but.
Right. I think it's officially the, I think the most invasive weed in the world they.
It's unbelievable.
It's crazy.
Right behind Mud War.
Yeah.
You know, the new bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's growing on that bank.
Yeah, and Jamie tried.
He, he tried and then it just came back stronger. So I think.
I, I mean further, you know, further downstream from there, when we got that property. It was there already.
Right.
It's just vibrating.
Right.
Yeah, it's a pretty. Decent standard Japanese knotweed.
I'm not in favor of the use of chemicals, but I know from studying it and stuff, it's the only way.
I said, yeah, I know it is. The other option is to remove about two feet of soil. And try to dig it up, but even that's partially effective. Obviously, uh, that's not something you wanna do, you know.
Okay, do you have an application in?
Yes, yeah.
Yep, they submitted a complete application.
Okay. Does somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this as an after the fact application.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sue second it? Any discussion? All in favor? Five years.
Thank you so much.
And you can renew it.
Alright.
I've got that same shirt there.
Yeah, same here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we're going to thirty two Apple Lane. Um, the Sturgis is. Dredge north, the north end of existing pond and remove island and fill to remain on site. So let's pull up the map.
Hi, for the record, my name is Jim Sturgis. Uh, what I'd like to do is dredge up this portion of the pond. It was dug by Jack Reon probably twenty five years ago. And there's an inlet on this end and it's all silted in on this end. It's probably about a foot and a half deep in this. In this area. Up to maybe three feet. So I'd like to dredge it, I drain it by about five feet. So that I can dig this out to an elevation of maybe four feet. Uh, the first thing I would do is. Drain the pond.
How do you drain it? Is there a?
Pump, pump it down. There would be a pump, like a pump down on this end. And then I would.
Were you discharging?
There's a, there's a runoff down through here and I would just pump it out of the pond into the existing. There's a rock swale that runs down through there.
Right, but how do you control sediment?
Well, I would, I would put the pump on a stand. Pond, so it's not on the bottom of pond. Uh, so there shouldn't be any sediment running out.
But if there is, I ask that you stop. And come up with a, the other plan, like a de-watering. You know, where you pump it into a, a dug hole and then.
I could, I can do that, but I'm not sure that I'm gonna need that because we're.
No, if you don't need it, fine. Big violation where he just kept pumping sediment. You know, and that's what I.
And this is about nine feet deep on this end. So I can only drop five feet. And then I'd dig a swell around here first thing, so that when any new water's running in, it will run into that swell and into the pond.
Okay.
And then all the, all the fills is gonna come up this way to a, I'd have a site truck. And this is where it was filled in before, but all that is settled a lot. It's really rough. So I would take all that material and put it in this area.
Okay.
Keep it on, keep it all on site.
Any questions?
So are you get, so I'm, so are you getting rid of what something spilled up from sediment or is it actual land there that?
Well, this, this is a little island, but it's. It's pretty much sunk into the, there's very little dry on that island. And there's a couple of trees that it's been killing. There's a hemlock on there that needs to come down because that's, that's dying. Cause I think it's too wet. Uh, and a couple of maples that are too wet. So I'd like to take the island right out.
Okay, so it's not just sediment it was. Okay, got you.
Alright, well. One question. Just about how much material do you think you're moving?
Probably twelve thousand yards, I guess. It's about, it's about ninety five feet across and about a hundred feet long. Uh, I'm gonna take. Eight, you know, foot to two feet out.
Do we need to look at it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll take a look at it.
Absolutely.
It's too wet now. Right?
Well, there's nothing running into it at the moment. It depends on the, cause it's all runoff.
We'll look at it to be safe and. Alright.
Okay.
Do we need to call somebody before we look or could we just go out?
My wife has a shotgun, so I would. Anytime.
Okay.
Feel free.
Where, well, best. Alright, what's next?
Okay, we're going to forty eight Baker Road, construction of a three bedroom, single family dwelling for a quickness. So Kim and Albert.
Jim's here. Good you left Albert home.
Did a little sketch of the, uh, the site here just for. Uh, pretty, pretty crude, but just shows the basic idea of. Of what's proposed. And it's kind of a wet area that's, um, it's kind of highlighted in. I recommended it. So scientists like levels which. Uh, my temple did that this week. So.
This is at Albert's house, if anybody knows where Albert and Kim live. On Baker Road right before the sharp, or Spargo. Spargo. Yeah. In the back, there's a barn and if go beyond the barn, the house is proposed. On a knoll. Uh, and all that is field. And when it becomes woods, cause I went out there before he wanted to spend money on this. Um, when you get to the woods, it's wet. There's a small wet lamp from water coming down off the hill and it's. Levels out and therefore it's a wetland. Um, yeah, exactly. Pretty easy to see in the field. Albert didn't wanna hire somebody, but I told him, you gotta do it. Heck it's up.
So this plan's like a little schematic drawing of, of what's proposed.
Okay.
Just showing a box for the house. A box for where the septic would go and. We'll have all the finished plans ready for the next meeting if you wanna go take a look at the site.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And does Albert's wife have a gun?
What's next?
W E O report.
Um, well, there's the, um, non-regulated permits that were issued. There's only like nine. Nothing all that exciting with that. Generator sheds, stuff like that, nothing of any significance. Just look at that for a moment. Um, after that, we'll go into the NOVs.
What's going on on two forty seven South Street?
Uh, that's the, um, they were sizing off the ship.
Right, but what are they doing?
He's gonna be, he's on the Zoom call.
He's actually on.
He's okay. Who? Pardon?
Morgado.
Okay, Mr. Morgado? Hi, Mr. Morgado.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you all? I, I had the opportunity to listen to your. Uh, managing this, uh. Potpourri of different issues, uh, Russ. For a number of years.
Thank you. Um, you're pumping water shipwreck into the pond and that requires a permit.
Well, that's, um, that's why I'm here to re, to give you. Uh, a little bit of the history. Let me say that obviously I'm responding to the notice of violation that has been issued by the commission. But I also view this as an opportunity to explain our understanding of the history of the subject before you. My family and I have a strong interest in the preservation of the natural ecology of the Shapog River. And the unspoiled rural character of the town of Roxbury. And appreciate the commission's public mandate in this regard. A short history of our relationship with Roxbury. Dr. Morgado and I purchased the farm. At two forty seven South Street nearly thirty years ago. The farm has had, has been owned now by only two families. For almost a hundred years between ourselves and the, and the family we purchased this from. The Craig Mile, which was in an estate condition. The structures included the main house. Which was an originally constructed circa eighteen forty five or eighteen forty. It's in the book that Roxbury put together. And an English barn that was also from the nineteenth century. And the, and the land. Was declining from time and neglect. While it would have been more economical and easier. For us to have demolished the existing structures and built a new home. We decided instead. To protect. The historical roots of the farm property. While also adding elements that we felt were conducive to contemporary living. We also maintained the farming cultivation that historically had occurred in the property. With maintenance of the historic character of the farm in mind. We engaged the team of local professionals, including among others, Rick Moissan. An architect, as architect, John Maurer as contractor and designer. And Kent Greenhouse as landscape architect. To prepare an overall plan to restore the farm buildings and the landscape. Their strategy also included removing some scrub trees. Invasive species among others along South Street. And planting the entire. Uh, place with hemlocks. Norway spruces. Other fir trees and sugar maples. Many of these new trees line almost one half mile on the west side of South Street. They also relocated a small portion of the hay fields. To create contiguous farming lands. And rebuilt almost a mile of old farm walls. While maintaining the historical genius of the north, south and east, west orientation of the original farm walls. From its inception, the master plan included both hardscape and landscape. In order to address the drainage from the property, they created a nearly one acre pond. That was fed by a small human constructed stream. To allow circulation of water in the pond in the non-wetlands area of the property. The soil and substrate is sandy, requiring that both the stream and pond. Be lined with ecologically sound barriers and imported clay. In addition to preserve the long-term health of the landscape. They designed an irrigation system. This master plan included withdrawing water from the pond for the irrigation. And maintaining a consistent water level in the pond by pumping water from the ship. In addition to the river pump. Maintaining the health of the pond requires a separate circulation pond. To add oxygen to the pond and an irrigation pump that draws water from the pond to a pressure tank. The pumps are all on a separate ever source power meter, which allows us to monitor and control power usage. This, this. The team submitted this master plan to the town, including this commission or your predecessor in nineteen ninety seven. In fact, members of this commission visited the property as part of the approval of parts of the master plan. The only amendment that I recall to the plan as submitted was a request to build a riff ramp. Element from the pond down to the slope, down the slope to the ship. No permit was ever required from the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. For the diversion of water. Because of our maximum withdrawal has never reached fifty thousand gallons of water during any twenty four hour period. I briefed the Connecticut deep, deep office official recently. To confirm that the withdrawal system for the maximum capacity of the pump. Based on field conditions, pipe constraints and actual testing. Even were we to run the pump continuously for twenty four hours a day. The amount that would be withdrawn from the ship will still be materially below the fifty thousand gallon limit. In the nearly thirty years since the pond was constructed. It has been fed by withdrawing up to fifteen to twenty thousand gallons of water a day. During the growing season, growing season from the ship. during the growing season from the Shapog during the five-month period each year from mid-May through mid-October, depending upon actual weather conditions. The actual daily withdrawal volume is controlled by time clocks and rain sensors. Therefore, many days during the period, no water is withdrawn at all. For many years, Brian Cartagena reinstalled annually the pumps, monitored their operation, and advised us of any appropriate permits required. This is the history of the site and the disclosures we have previously made to the town of Roxbury. With respect to the Roxbury inland and wetlands and water course regulations, which were first enacted well after the original approval of our master plan, we believe that because the pond and Shapog activities were approved as part of the original approved plan for the farm, we were in compliance with them. We also applied where necessary and received permits as required for the activities on our farm, including an annual permit under the DEEP's Deer Crop Damage Permit Program to protect potential loss of crops from deer damage, and a permit from DEEP for the importation and liberation permit for triploid grass carp for nuisance aquatic vegetation control, for both the crop damage permit and the grass carp DEEP made onsite visits and inspections of our farming activities and the pond respectively. My family has a strong connection to the health of the Shapog River and the preservation of farming in Roxbury. When the town of Washington sued the city of Waterbury for control of the Shapog, based on the legal theory that the public interest surpasses a private contract, our family contributed to the funding of the lawsuits. Indeed, we support Roxbury's protection of our valuable natural resources, the Shapog River, farmland, and the Roxbury community's well-being. Time itself is established that we certainly have not negatively impacted the Shapog River. Instead, the river has helped us to protect more than one hundred acres of farmland and forest land. I thank you for making the opportunity, giving me the opportunity to address this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Margato, for that, for the history, and your reputation is well-known in the town as being a big fan of the river and what you've done there, because I lived there, there is beautiful, it's a beautiful piece of property. The complaint came in from a neighbor mostly because of the noise of the pump. And although we don't regulate noise, I could understand your neighbor being upset because they claimed that the pump went twenty-four-seven and it was very loud, and that recently the pump was changed, and they gave me the half, one-point-five horsepower, which I calculated to be ninety-seven thousand gallons a day if you're running that kind of pump twenty-four-seven. But what you state is different, and thank you for coming in and providing us with the facts. And I had John go back in the record, but we couldn't find an approval of any kind of permit, but you're right that if it was, I do remember going there. You remember going there?
I do, yes, but I also remember, at the time, it was, you know, apparent that Waterbury was draining the Shapog River. It was low, so we, as a commission, were very concerned about drawing, anyone drawing from the river. So I don't know, do you have any recollection of us requesting irrigation wells to fill the pond versus the pump system out of the river?
You addressing me the question?
Yeah, yes, I am.
Okay, let me respond first to the interest that, that Russ actually was on our property before we started. And Russ, you gave me a genealogy of the, the area in which this property is located, telling me that several eons ago, this was a lake, and that I would find, whatever we do here, just endless amount of sand. You were absolutely right in that. We have two wells for private consumption on our, for our homes, and they are nearly seven hundred foot deep, which is really, really unusual because of the river drawing most of the water as it goes down to the aquifer. So we were, we, we were stuck with the the, sort of the, what I would call the trade-off. Do you really go, want to go into the aquifer that deep in order to provide water for irrigation? And we didn't think that was really a right decision. We realized what we were, we were needing was going to be the high, the, once we created this pond, we would, we'd be creating our own aquatic system with plant life and other aquatic life becoming part of it. And therefore it had to be supported with, with, with a constant supply. Now, the question, I think, that you've also raised, Russ, let me go back and, and tell you, because I'm aware of what was done by just a simple calculation of using a one-and-a-half horsepower. That's not field conditions, because the, the piping is, that comes from the river into the pump is two inches. The output side is one and a quarter, which is going to control the amount you can truly pump. And on top of that, it has to go up a ridge that is nearly thirty or forty feet high, almost sixty-degree vertical drop, and then travel another three hundred, four hundred feet to the pond. We have, we have tested this pump repeatedly, and its output is closer to twenty to twenty-two gallons a minute. So you, that's the math, because that's the actual calculation based on field tests. And there is no way that we pump anywhere near that amount of money, I mean, that amount of gallons that you referenced by what this pump is capable of. That, that's a closed system, in two inches, out two inches, and maybe up four or five feet. That's the, when they establish the grade, not under conditions that which the pump is in effect. The, this pump that supposedly is causing a lot of noise has been there now for at least four years, this particular pump. And so it's very curious why it's suddenly become noisy. And, but on top of that, the, as I said, we've tried many different approaches, members of the commission, submersible pumps. They just can't, they don't have the ability to be able to effectively or economically pump twenty thousand gallons. It's just, it's just not in that capability, unless you go to some really powerful one, and we've never wanted to do that. And Brian, who has serviced this property on my behalf, Brian Cartagena that is, for the last eight or nine years until he retired recently, he said to us that the constant plugging of the pumps that were in the river was, was a source of its, and all, a source of constant concern, because it, it required his oversight continually. And so that's when he recommended we go to, to an above-ground one. So that's the gestation of that. Before the, this system was decided upon, we, we tried dug wells, but as I said, there's, everyone, every time, every attempt to do that, emptied the dug, the well in a very short order, that it couldn't supply anything.
Okay, yeah, we, we get that, we get that. Any other questions? It sounds like it was approved thirty years ago, but.
But I do think it was approved with the dug well as a supply, but it didn't work, is what I'm gathering. So then they decided to.
No, no. It was approved in its totality once we became operational. We tried different approaches. In fact, this is in my commentary that earlier on, before we embarked on a more expensive approach to this property, we had looked at the back of the property closer to the river, but still way above the floodplain. Brian Neff did some soil percolation tests for us, and we came back to, no, we really cannot take down this historic property.
Okay, thank you, because that information's important. What does the commission want to do? We gave approval back then, I guess, we know this is going on now? So I'm for taking no action?
I, I am too, but my concern is, is there, can everyone along the river draw off forty-nine thousand gallons a day?
No. They still need a permit. He needs a permit for his twenty gallons a minute, but he got that approval.
Yeah, no, I, I get that, but, okay, so it's a permit process through, who, through, not through us?
Through us.
Through us, okay.
If it's, it's.
If it's over that, then it goes to.
It's similar to tree cutting. When you clear up to five acres of land, you need a permit from us. You're over five acres, you need a permit from DEEP and from us. In this case, if they went over fifty thousand gallons, they need a permit from DEEP, and we're out of it. It's DEEP's jurisdiction. Under that is ours. But we do have to remember, everybody who lives on the river has proprietary rights. They have rights to take water. How much water? That's what you decide from the permit, how much is really needed. You know, I hate to see water taken out when the river's really low, but that, that hasn't happened. Mr. Margato might be doing people downstream a favor with the recent rainstorms. So we tried to look in the file before we issued the NOV, and because we didn't find anything, the only option we have was not to ignore it, but, and Mr. Margato was kind enough to come in and not with a lawyer and, you know, not like, this is my right, get out of my way, because he's one of us, so.
No, I recall, I walked, I recalled this, this application. I was on the commission for it.
Right, so do I, but I couldn't remember.
No, and I just remember, because we were having problems with the city of Waterbury, that we were concerned of drawing water to fill the pond. So we, we requested well supply to fill the pond, and apparently that didn't work because there.
And now I remember that. I didn't remember before.
And remember the actual. And Russ, remember the actual challenge was really sub to Waterbury. As I said, we participated in Health Fund, was well after this permit. It was sometime in early two thousand, the actual lawsuit, because I was here already, and I wouldn't have been here until ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, after we completed the rehab and restoration. And let me remind, Russ, because I'm sure you know, and I know John knows quite well, that I think this is, other than the Arthur Carter family, we have the longest strip of the waterway, the Shapog, controlled by a private person or family. We have about a half a mile of the Shapog. And that, and as you said, Russ, quite, quite honestly, also odd is because we own both sides of the river. We own the side of where the improvements are, and we own a strip of land all the way opposite the eighty acres on the south side, the west side of South Street, and we go up about five hundred feet beyond what we have on the east side. So we have a, obviously, a large position and concern about the Shapog. I remember well how low it was when we were here, already here before the lawsuit. And that decision, as you well know, for all of you as well, that established the first time the, the legal precedent that the public interest can, in fact, supersede a private contractual relationship. And even riparian rights, which are historic and all the way back to common law, comes into consideration, but you can establish the public interest. The public interest is very often related to navigable waters. The Shapog is not navigable, and each of the owners along, along its pathway, and as you said, I mean, we're almost half a mile because anybody on the south side of us. And I'm, I'm sorry about the complaint you got, but were we to run this pump twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, which it would overflow the bank. Why would I want to do that?
All right, we'll, we'll report back to them, but the commission's not going to take any action. And I want to thank you for taking your time to come in and explain it to us, and refresh our memories.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Both of my, both of my spouse here, Dr. Margato, I don't know whether you can see her.
I can't see us.
Hi.
Hi.
Let us know when you're in town.
Okay, you are, thank you. You're, you're doing very important work for the environment, and we, we care a lot about our planet, so thank you.
Thank you, doctor. We appreciate it. Yeah. That's why we're here.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm sorry to keep you to, what, almost nine o'clock, eight-thirty?
Thank you.
I admire the, the public service you're all doing, especially.
Appreciate it, yeah.
The volunteer members of the commission.
Thank you.
So thank you and good night.
Good night.
Good night. Have a great weekend when it gets here. Counting the days.
Have a good holiday.
If anybody wants to tour the property at some time, just give us a holler.
Not anybody, just the committee.
Just the commission. But it's, it's been a labor of love, I must tell you.
Thank you. What's next, Julie?
Do you need to do a motion to close the NOV?
Yes, I'll make a motion to close the notice of violation against Margato, based on the information provided. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Want in favor?
Aye.
Well, that's done.
Okay, we're going to ten-twelve Baker Road.
Okay, that's the notice of violation that went out last month. I've been going there, monitoring it. I was there today. There's been extensive work done, but I would have to say that there's still a lot of work to be done. Pardon? There's still more work to be done there.
Okay, has the commission gone out and?
I have not.
I have not.
I have not.
Kathy? She's gone, right? Sierra, did you, yes, Sierra went out. Meredith, your, your consultant was supposed to submit a report, right?
It'll be emailed over to Dr. Nam to Julie after the report's done.
There was a report, it was emailed.
To all of you.
I saw it.
I, I saw it.
At about three forty-five.
I saw it.
Could you please follow the process the rest of the town follows?
I didn't email her.
All right. And whoever, you know, everything with wetlands goes to Jewel. Doesn't, doesn't contact me. Enforcement matters go to John? Anything goes to Julie, she distributes it to the commission. We do not communicate with commissions through emails or any other thing. It has to go through land use. So when I get emails from people on my private, of course, if it's on the town, I have a town email. But if it's on a private email, I don't read it. It it gets deleted because nobody has a right to.
Well, I think if we all send it to your private, so it must go to the town and I'm sending it and Julie, it just has it right there, so.
It was sent this afternoon. And I got it when I came into work at six PM tonight when I came back. And there is a copy of the report that we have here and we have two copies here. It was distributed to everybody on the committee.
So everybody should read it for the next meeting and please go out and look. Mark, is it okay if they just drive in and drive around? Now, recently, um, we've had a complaint that there's pollution on the property, okay? So I want to make it clear for the record. Pollution is not in the jurisdiction of wetland commissions. Spills, people polluting with oils or hazardous waste is solely. The jurisdiction of the Connecticut Department of Environmental, well, Energy and Environmental Protection. As I told your consultant at the last meeting, if he saw oil being dripped on the ground, he's got an obligation to contact deep. The wetland commission has no jurisdiction. It doesn't care to take. Uh, jurisdiction that we're just frankly not suited for. So if there's a pollution issue, that needs to go to deep.
We did contact you and we did email you about it and I followed the email and read to you what we did say and they did say that the pollution which is in the regulations. Does fall under the jurisdiction of the weapons and that you should know that tonight, so I'll pick guys name that we spoke to because he said he knows you very well. And then you can go out and and see the pollution that it is within your jurisdiction.
Okay, so when you go out, when you go out, look for the pollution. They claim there's a smell of diesel, uh, not just them, but Dennis McDonald did send an email. He smells diesel. Uh, I've gone out and I'm a trained professional on this stuff. I haven't seen any pollution. But that doesn't mean there's nothing there because I didn't go out there with with my sniffer. Uh, you know, uh, I think any driveway or parking lot, you're going to see a little stain. That's not something, that's called the minimus. In the regulations, but when you go out, you want to look at how he's complying with getting stuff out of the buffer zone. And then if you see any signs of pollution. And we'll read the consultant's report and we'll talk about it next meeting, okay? Anything else, John? Okay.
Tom, actually, do you want to extend more time for Mr. Lo to clean up? Because we gave him thirty days.
Is that what he's requesting?
Yes.
How many? How much do you need?
Another thirty would be good.
You sure that's enough?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're we're getting close.
All right. So uh. Somebody want to make a motion to approve the extension?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
It's late.
Thank you.